Good evening and welcome to the August 27th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. In accordance with open meeting law, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience also recording the meeting. Seeing none, could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every faith and justice and sorrow.
So, our first item tonight is a joint meeting with the Library Trustees to appoint a member of the Board of Library Trustees to fill a vacancy until May 21st, 2019. So I'm going to ask Chairman Toth to call his meeting to order.
Meeting to order, please.
Okay. And so, in accordance with Mass General Law, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Library Trustees will jointly make an appointment to the Library Board of Trustees. The Library Trustees have met, have done some interviews, and I'm going to turn it over to the Chairman and bring us up to speed as to where we are in the process.
Thank you, Darine. We interviewed three candidates, three applicants, for this position. We met on two different nights to make sure that we could interview all the candidates that had requested an interview. The three applicants were very interesting. Each had some community involvement experience. Each had talked extensively about how they saw the library, what their view of the future of the library might be like. We were especially interested in issues of technology and knowledge of technology and the understanding of how things change in the library. After our second meeting, we voted and made a recommendation for Jennifer Lee Shea to the Board of Trustees of the Auburn Public Library.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do any members of the Board of Selectmen have any questions regarding their process or their nomination? No. Mr. Chairman, if one of your board members would like to make a formal nomination?
I nominate Jennifer Lee Shea to the position of Board of Trustees.
Okay, we have a nomination for Jennifer Lee Shea. Is there a second?
I second.
There's a second. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close the nominations?
Motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So, Mr. Chairman, in accordance with Mass General Law, we have one nomination. I'll ask you to do a roll call vote of your members to either vote yes or no for Jennifer Lee Shea.
Ms. Malkin?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Will Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
And the Chairman votes yes. So, congratulations. I see our applicant is here. Best of luck in your new position. And I also want to recognize Dr. Jean Collins, our library director, who is here for the hearing tonight. So, thank you and best of luck. Mr. Chairman, if there's nothing else, you can adjourn your meeting.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Now, second that?
We are all in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
And have our other meeting.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thank you.
And while we're waiting to get settled for the next item, I will just make note that we have a representative from the Worcester Telegram and Gazette who is here, who is making an audio recording of this meeting. Let Sharon get settled.
I don't need anything. Is it you?
It's you.
Give it to you.
I'm just waiting for Sharon.
You know what? I can see yours. Do you have anything here by any chance?
Going back to our agenda, we have public comment. And under public comment, we have the Fire Chief, Stephen Coleman, who's going to make some introductions. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Thank you for having us.
I'm sorry, we just need to have them move out of the hallway.
Chris is on it.
We don't want to take anything away from your presentation tonight, so we just wanted to be sure. So I'm going to, the Town Manager has something she wants to offer first, and then I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. And I know I had sent you an email earlier, but we wanted to introduce Penny Ryan, our first and new Communications Director in the department. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of a background, and mostly for those who are here who may not know about Penny. And we actually had an interview process that had over 50 applicants. We set up an assessment center and went through a rigorous process, and happy to say that Penny came out shining and was offered the position and has now been here, starting your fourth week now. Started the first week in August. Prior to being here, Penny had been an EMT for the Town of Charlton back in 1994, where she worked as an EMT intermediate on advanced life support ambulance. She became a public safety dispatcher in 1998, and previously had served as the lead dispatcher for the Charlton Police Department since 2011. She holds a Communication Center Supervisor Certificate from the Association of Public Safety Communications, which is also called APCO. She is an APCO Communications Training Officer and holds certification in EMT dispatch, CPR instructor for the American Heart Association. She's a graduate of the Western Mass Regional Training Center Reserve Intimate Police Academy, and she's only one of only 25 dispatchers in the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts to hold certification as a Communication Center Manager from the International Academies of Emergency Dispatch. So as you can see, she's extremely well qualified for this position, and we're very excited about it. For those who don't know, the new Communications Director position is located in the Police Department and will be directly overseeing dispatch and reporting jointly to the Police Chief and the Fire Chief as our newest appointee. And she's already hit the ground running. She's already met with all the public safety personnel departments, dispatch, and is looking to make recommendations and evaluate the operations of the center and see what we can do, if anything, to make some improvements. So I just want to welcome her, and I understand her husband and children are here as well this evening. So thank you for sharing her with us, because we know this is a very difficult job, and for all of our public safety members, you know, when you become a Town of Auburn employee, especially in public safety, it is very time consuming, and we know it's a sacrifice, not just for the employee, but for the families. So we thank you. Chief?
Well, thank you. I'll turn it over to Penny. We're just very glad to have her, both Chief Lucas and I. As the Town Manager said, she's already hit the ground running reviewing the operation. She's got some big projects in the upcoming year ahead with the center, so we're thrilled to have her. We joked before we sat down, one of her assessment center stations was in this room. She had a little bit of a flashback when she walked in, but she seems to be doing okay now. But we're thrilled to have her within the Town of Auburn. So, turn over to Penny.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I just want to say, I just want to thank the Chief, both Chiefs, and Julie for recognizing the need for this position. You guys are way ahead of most areas. It's definitely a needed position. You've got some great personnel. I've got great personnel dispatchers. We're going to be tweaking a little bit of things, but other than that, it's just being there, being their voice. So it's been really great. And I'm very humbled. Everybody in the town, town people, and all the employees have been wonderful. So thank you for letting me come to Auburn.
Well, welcome. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. And you look exactly like your brother.
You've never heard that before, right?
Are you talking to me?
You've never, yeah.
So I just wanted to say I had the opportunity to meet you at a recent open house at the New Dialysis Center. And I just want people to know that, you know, you were there in support of the community, but you weren't just there to support an open house. I watched you, and you were having conversations about the doors and access and how the, you know, emergency personnel would get in, taking notes, ready to take that back to both departments. So, thank you for your—
Very important.
Yeah, yeah. You just, you know, you were on your game, even though it was just an open house to welcome the town. So thank you for your commitment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chief, did you have anything else?
You're all set if you want to go.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just real quickly, I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce four new Call Firefighters that have recently been sworn into the department within the last 30 days. And then we also have with us this evening a Call Firefighter that's been with us for a couple of years, but he was never formally introduced to the department. We actually have a meeting right after this, so he was able to be with us tonight. If the members could stand, the new members, from left to right, we have Firefighter Rich Levangi. Rich has been with us for a couple of years now. Scott Williams, welcome back. James Sylvia, Joshua Donovan, and Christine Kehoe. One of them is already a graduate of the Call of All program from the Mass Fire Academy. One, Mr. Sylvia, is currently enrolled. Christine will be starting her program in October. So we've got a lot of work ahead of us over the upcoming year, but like I said, I just wanted the opportunity to bring them here this evening so you could see them, meet them. And that's it. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Great. Now, do any of you have any questions to comment?
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
You've got a good department to come to, and you'll fill the roles well. Good luck.
And Chief—
And always be safe out there.
And Chief, I'll also comment, you know, as always with your department. I see you have two other members who are here in support of just these introductions tonight. So Deputy Chief Johnson is here, as well as Captain Mitchell. Thank you for being here in support of your department tonight. And welcome aboard, everyone.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. So, because we have people waiting, I'd like to move up a couple items. Could I have, so we have, Mr. Carpenter is going to be late. We have an appointment and interviews for the ZBA, but we also have some bonds that we need to sign that the Town Clerk is here. If we want to, I'm not sure what time Mr. Carpenter will be here, but do we want to move the bonds up first?
Yeah. Which ones you want to move up?
Let's see.
Seven As?
Yes. Yeah. So it's just seven A, and the CFO will give us a—
I'll make a motion. Will you move up item 7A on the agenda?
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So before us, we have right now the vote pertaining to the bond anticipation note, the ban renewal, that requires a vote of the Board of Selectmen to be witnessed by the Town Clerk and the Treasurer. Mr. Kaznovich?
Madam Chair, thank you for an opportunity to speak on this. And members of the Board, we do have a bond issue or a ban coming due, are maturing on September 14th. As part of what we are going to consider tonight is a renewal of that ban, we have a required $133,000 pay down as a result of the ban exceeding its two-year limit. The current ban coming due is $2,181,290. We're doing a renewal for $2,288,290, which is comprised of the following. That represents a short-term note for the current middle school of $2,48,290. It requires a short-term borrowing for a six-month period to meet certain FY19 capital needs within the school department, and also represents $135,000 cash flow need out of a $300,000 authorization that Town Meeting passed at the annual Town Meeting. We do not need the full $300,000, because since Town Meeting, we received a green energy grant specifically for the streetlight conversion to LED in the amount of $229,599. We did get a rate on this issue of 2.29%. The bidder was TD Bank North for the full value of $2,288,290. So, as a result of a final audit that will go before MSBA in October, we had to go out for a short-term borrowing until such time that audit is closed out to determine our final share of the project. So we're going to borrow for a six-month period, and then we will prepare to do a long-term borrowing for all of these notes in the spring, which will be early March. We will begin preparing an official statement of the town the end of December, shortly after Christmas, followed by a rating review probably sometime in February, which will lead to a bond issue in early March. So that's a summary of what's before you tonight. I can tell you the rates have gone up. The last time we brought a short-term borrowing before the Board, we got a rate of just under 1%. The rates have significantly increased, although a 2.29 rate historically is a good rate. But we knew that the market was changing. We knew rates were climbing, and that's why we're only going out for six months, because we want to go to market and take advantage of the lower rates before they increase even more.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions regarding this? Is there a motion? Mr. Holstrom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I moved at the sale of the $2,288,290 bond anticipation note dated September 14th, 2018, otherwise known as the note, to TD Bank NA at the price of $2,288,290. It's hereby approved and confirmed. The note shall be payable on March 15th, 2019, and shall bear interest at the rate of 2.29%.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a second for Mr. Berthew? Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So do you need to come up and have us sign something in your presence?
The first one is the covenant, and it's actually them scattered. Yeah, three of them.
I might run out of ink, because I can get all right.
These are the same forms. Those have the same base.
Nice, huh?
That was someone's daughter.
Yeah.
And this one is the certificate of the town.
So just the five of us here?
Yes. Last one is the note itself, and you were saying right there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They look beautiful. I love deciphering it.
Once Deb witnesses everything? Yes, it is. This needs to be done in public in front of the Clerk, so thank you for your patience. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kaznovich. So before we move on to our next item, I just, with the Board's permission, Mr. Galant is here, and he didn't realize it was a sign-up sheet for public comment, so I'm going to go back to public comments and allow Mr. Steve Galant to speak. Good evening.
Thank you. My name's Steve Galant. I'm representing the Chester P. Tuttle American Legion Post 279 here in Auburn. Thank you for allowing me to make this announcement. On August 16th, 2015, we honored 82 World War II veterans. Well, the time has come to recognize veterans of a different era, and this would be the forgotten war, Korea. It's our duty as the American Legion to take care of our brothers and sisters in service of our country. At our Spirit of 45 event, we honored the veterans from Auburn and surrounding area, and because of the number of veterans, because they were all pretty up there in age, we were able to handle everyone. People still talk about it as a very memorable event. We hope that this event that we're going to hold will be, give the same impact. On September 15th, 2018, at the Chester P. Tuttle Post at 88 Bancroft Street in Auburn, a recognition ceremony will be held for the Auburn veterans as well as other Korean War veterans around the area. We will have a color guard. We'll have military vehicles of the period, music of the period, and exhibits, as well as a pin presentation to each and every Korean War veteran presented by Our Lady's Auxiliary. Anyone who knows a Korean War veteran from the area is urged to get in touch with us to reserve a place. We need to have a number so that we know how many people are going to be coming. We found that the last event in the last two weeks, that's when we got a surge of people calling us, because they finally heard about it. We haven't had the same kind of advertisements this time, so a lot of people don't know about it. So, and we're asking anyone who knows a veteran of the Korean War to get in touch with us at the American Legion in Auburn, or they can check the Auburn News, the archive from, I think, two weeks ago, did a story, gave our web address and a phone number. I'll give it to you now. I hope people will be able to write it down. The phone number, oh, by the way, the event will be held on a Saturday, September 15th, from 1:00 to 4:00. And there's no charge for this event. The number that you should call if you have someone who would like to go would be (508) And that will be an answering service. You leave your name and your number, and we'll get back to you and give you the details. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Good luck with your event.
Yeah.
Question?
Oh, Mr. Berthew?
Do you also want surviving spouses? If it's a veteran that's already passed, that was a veteran of the Korean War?
It's most, well, it's set up basically for the living veterans.
For the living veterans. Okay. So— Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Because we have people in the audience, I'm going to ask to move up Agenda Item 5B.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So we have interviews for a zoning Board of Appeals Associate Member to expire on June 30th, 2021, per our policy. The two applicants have been sent the questions in advance, and also per our policy, the Board Chair is allowed to ask two questions, and I see Mr. Tatro, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, is here. So if you'd like to come up and join us, and then I'll ask the applicants to come up.
Chairman, members of the Board, good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see you all.
Thank you.
Before we get started, could I just make a comment for a minute?
I'm sure—
I really just want to take a second and thank each and every one of you on the Board. Over the last several years, the Zoning Board of Appeals has been able to develop a very strong team, very respectful of each other's decisions, even if we don't agree. We've also been able to develop with your appointments very nice, continuous, and respectful relationships with the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission as such. I think it's shown in town with the activities that we've had come into town, different businesses and different opportunities. So I just want to thank you for your diligence in interviewing these applicants, because honestly, without you making the appointments, this would not all be possible. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tatro. And so I just want to confirm for the benefit of the Board, you have a full Board members, and then you have one currently who serves as an alternate, and this is to fill the second alternate position?
Yes. So we have two candidates this evening interviewing for one alternate position.
Right. But you currently have full complement of your Board, and you also have one member who's serving as an alternate?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. So, in order of alphabetical order and how they're in your packet, is Mr. Peter Jones here? Mr. Jones, please come up and join us. Good evening. So this is Peter Jones. You have his application and just received his resume this evening. You were provided the questions in advance.
Yes, I don't actually have them with me.
No, no, that's okay. I'm just, because you can, I'm sure that, you know, you've seen them. We just wanted, we wanted you to have them. So I am going to ask you the questions that we ask all applicants. The Chairman will have an opportunity to ask you a couple of questions, and then each Board member can ask up to two questions if they so choose. And then I'll let you make a statement if you'd like. So the first question is, what is your interest in serving on this particular Board?
I have two reasons for wanting to serve on the Board. First is I've been a resident in Auburn since 2013. It's the first time I've actually owned a home in a community, so it's, you know, my first opportunity to lay roots in the community. My daughter is just now starting kindergarten in the public schools here, so this seems like inappropriate time to become more involved in the town. I've gotten to know many people through her daycare center, the Goddard School, and I'm getting to know more residents of the town through a volunteer coaching position with the Auburn soccer program. I'm coaching her U5 team this fall. And also, I have a strong interest in municipal law. As a law student, I did a few different internships in municipal law. Two in Rhode Island, one in Vermont. Haven't done any here in Massachusetts, but I have been very interested in municipal law. My law career didn't take me into municipal law. The economy tanked when I finished law school in '07, so I found myself doing foreclosures rather than my intended area of practice. But since then, I've never really lost interest in it. One of my close friends is, was a town planner and is now a Town Manager, and I always have interesting, engaging conversations with him about, you know, what his role has been.
Great. So I think you've, you know, you've kind of answered it, especially with your resume, but do you have any special experiences or skills that would enhance your appointment?
I've been a lawyer for 10 years, so I'm familiar with the practice of determining what the law is and applying the law to the facts and coming to a reasonable, defensible conclusion.
Great. And do you have any time constraints that would affect your attendance at the scheduled meetings or any additional meetings if required?
I do not anticipate any restrictions at all.
And, Mr. Chairman, could you just tell us when the Board meets?
So we meet the third Thursday of every month, usually at 7:00. Occasionally, it may get rescheduled as needed, if that would not affect your schedule at all. It's rare, but it does occasionally have to happen.
Okay.
If the only two nights of the week that would be an obstacle would be Tuesdays and Wednesdays. As long as they're all on Thursdays, there should be no issue at all.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, did you want to ask any questions?
The questions you provided to the applicant actually satisfied half of them, so just tell me, what is your understanding of what the responsibility to the zoning Board is?
Well, the primary responsibility is to consider appeals, zoning appeals. Well, the primary responsibility is to consider appeals, zoning appeals. There are issues with special permit applications, and there are issues with applications for variances, and it's the job of the ZBA to determine whether or not these, these requests should be granted.
Great. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Do board members have any questions? Masala Liberty?
Through the chair, have you sat in on any of the meetings in the past or seen them on Cable Access?
I have not sat in on any of them here in Auburn. I have looked at the website to review the minutes from, notes from this year. It's, it's been a long time since I've actually been involved in municipal law. So, in terms of attendance in a town meeting, to be honest, I haven't done that since I was an intern. That's it.
Mr. Holstrom.
Good evening. Welcome. As an alternate, will you be able to, well, you say you haven't had too much work in municipal law. You know, being an alternate, would you be able to catch up with the municipal law and the Board of Appeals rules and regulations to apply yourself if ever comes a time that you called up as an alternate?
Absolutely. I've been learning new areas of law for the past 10 years on a regular basis. I've done foreclosure law, eviction law, care and protection law, divorce law, unwed parents custody law, a little bit of real estate closings, post-foreclosure evictions, which differ from regular evictions, education law. I think it would be exciting to get back into this area of law after so long and re-familiarize myself with the details. Actually, for Massachusetts, it would be for the first time outside of the many discussions that I've had with my friend who's a former town planner, now town manager.
Thank you.
Anything else? Did you want to make any closing statement or anything?
I think with my opening, I, the opening question, I covered it for the most part. I'd be very excited to just do more for the town. I feel like it's, the town's been a huge benefit to my family. Certainly, my, my wife and child love living here, and I think it'd be nice to get more involved and contribute, more than just voting.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
And next, we have Karen Sumasione-Radi. Come on up. And in your packet, you also have her application and resume in your packet. Good evening.
Hello.
Would you like to make an open statement and move right into the questions?
My name is Karen Sumasione-Radi. I live at 318 Packard Chuck Street in Auburn. Since 1993, I have owned my residence, and I have a huge interest in commercial real estate. I'm on the board of commercial real estate in Auburn, as well as the membership board. I have a criminal justice degree pre-law with politics, minor in politics, and I seen that there was an opening in the zoning board, and I want to enhance my commercial career. And I got 2017 and '18 top producer in the state, and I'm going to be the little girl that runs Walmart, whether I'm on the zoning board or not.
So, all right, I'm going to move on to the same questions that I asked our first applicant. What is your interest in serving?
My interest in serving is I now have the time. My children are all grown up, and I'm home alone with my little dog. So, I have an interest in politics and the town, and I can have the time to serve, and I figure zoning, commercial, work together, and variances and permits, and I just want to learn so much more, and this will enhance my learning.
Okay. Do you have any special interests or skills that will enhance your appointment?
I have. I'm a, I'm a commercial railter. I'm a regular railter. I'm on the board of commercial in Auburn with Colleen and Betsy Linder.
And do you have any time constraints that would affect your attendance at the scheduled meetings, which you just heard is the third Thursday, or any additional meetings?
I have no more time restraint. My children are all grown up, and I am full-time in real estate commercial.
Okay. Great. Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to ask any questions?
I think I lost the same question I did of the other candidate, just what is your understanding of the zoning board of appeals and what its responsibilities are?
The permits and the variances and the buildings and what's going on in the town. I want to know, I wanted to know about Worcester, but they said I have to stay in Auburn, so here I am in Auburn.
Okay. Anything else?
I want to know everything that's going on in my town.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Do members have any questions? Masala Liberty?
I'll also ask the same question, which is, have you been to any of the meetings or watched any of them on?
I have never been to a meeting. I have watched you on TV. I've watched Doreen. I've watched the manager. They all do a wonderful job. I vote. I love politics. I love people, and I love the town.
Thank you.
Mr., did you have a follow-up on?
Oh, no.
Okay. Mr. Holstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome. Thank you for coming in tonight. As an alternate, you have the chance to become educated and get ready to fit in that spot for a position on the board if need be. Have you got the time, will you be able to catch up with municipal law, with the board's rules and regulations to follow along so that you can objectively look at, you know, any issue that comes up?
I do have the time, and I have a passion for education. Like I said, I have a degree from QuinSig in management and a criminal justice degree pre-law from Worcester State University. I was the first woman president of the Criminal Justice Board, and I got all the courts, graduated with straight A's in 2015, the non-traditional student.
Thank you.
So, yes, I have a passion for education.
Thank you.
Does, are there any other questions? Did you want to close with anything?
Well, thank you for your time, and I was very thrilled to get that letter. If whoever gets the seat is good with me, I'm still going to be involved.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks so much for being here. So, I also just want to recognize Vice Chairman Mike Maron, who's here from the Zoning Board of Appeals in support of his chairman. Thank you for being here, Mr. Maron. Do you have anything else, Mr. Tatro?
The only thing I could offer additionally is that through the chair, we created a zoning board of appeals review committee. So, we're going through all of our zoning bylaws, and it seems we have two qualified candidates. Whichever the board would choose to select for the zoning board, it might be advisable for the other candidate to go onto the zoning board review committee, which we actually have a couple of openings for, and it would sort of maybe put them in line, so to speak, for future opportunities.
And that's a manager appointment?
Through the chair, that's correct. That's a manager appointment. But I also was, actually, Ed and I were saying that we do have a number of openings on other boards, and I noticed both of you did check off that you're willing to serve on other boards. So, whoever is chosen for this board will definitely, I'm going to reach out to you probably tomorrow and let you know about some of the other openings and see if there's a good fit elsewhere. As you said, zoning board, the zoning bylaw review committee, the master plan committee, there are a lot of opportunities. Off the top of my head, I think we might even have a Conservation Commission seat, as well as a planning board alternate seat, which is somewhat of this, but it's a planning board.
Thank you. So, we, we've had our interviews. We did just receive Mr. Jones' resume this evening. I'm not sure how the, Mr. Holstrom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you would know, we had just received Mr. Jones' resume for tonight. We've gotten Karen Su's already, and I think I would like to table this to our next meeting so that we have a chance to take a look at both of these and make a decision at our next meeting. And I'll make that as a motion.
Motion is to hold it till the next meeting, and there was a second by Mr. Berthium. Is there any discussion under the motion? So, this would be, our next meeting is September 12, correct? 10, I'm sorry. I don't know why I keep saying that. Is there any discussion under the motion? All those in favor?
Just through, through the chair, to the chair. That doesn't pose a problem if we don't vote tonight?
No, it'll be fine.
Yeah. This, this seat has been empty for some time.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we're going to table the vote to the next meeting so members can have an opportunity to review and, you know, think about what they've just heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thanks so much for coming in. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Chairman and Vice Chairman, thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
So, we have one more item that we have someone in the audience here for, and that is, let me find it.
7D and E.
7D, which is the Recycling Dividends Grant Award, and E, Mass DEP Recycle Smart Program. Is there a motion to move those two items up?
Make a motion, move up 7D and E under Town Manager items?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So, when we finish this item, I'll move it up.
I'd like to ask our Assistant Health Director, Eileen, to join us and bring and share some good news with the board, and wanted to make sure that Eileen was able to speak to you this evening and answer any questions that you may have on some of these initiatives that are going on in the state, as well as a grant that we just received. So, I turn it over to Eileen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the, we received recently the DEP Sustainable Grant Award from DEP. We've got $11,000 this year. It's increased every year since we've had it. Many thanks for this, though, go to Amy Sullivan. She knows the program well. She has worked on a solid waste committee for years, and her vast knowledge of the solid waste field helps the town out immensely. So, we have to get points each year, and we expand our program each year to try to attain the most points we can. This year, we got 10 points, which gave us a grant of $11,000. The funds should be coming soon. When the grant was awarded, the state always, also came out with the Recycle Smart Program. I did put a board up there to show they're trying to go back to basics for recycling, kind of like a re-education program. But they created a website. When you go to recycle smart MA.org, there's an encyclopedia part. You can type in any product that you may have. It'll tell you how to recycle it, whether to throw it in the trash, instructions on what you should do for rinsing or taking care of it. And they're hoping to remove the contamination from our recycling, which is causing the increase in solid waste fees. It's causing the outside, external businesses not to take our recycling because it's, it's contaminated and they can't use it. So, plastic bags and film, they're trying to recycle in the grocery stores, keep it out of the conveyor belts, which can ruin an entire load, to keep food out of the recycling, to keep moisture out of the recycling. Once the cardboard and newspaper get wet, it no longer can be a source that's used into recyclable material. So, the state is rolling out this program, and they're going to roll out toolkits to kind of go back to basics for everyone. We have the toolkits. We have a recycle coordinator that has been increasing our efforts all year with PSAs out in the community, educating people, and we hope that we can keep increasing our points and keep increasing the money that we get back to sustain this program.
Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Holstrom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, this solid waste has been, well, I guess it's been ongoing for a long time. I know the solid waste collection started out, and now we're starting to recycle, and yes, it is a little bit of a project for people to recycle, but it's well worth it in the end. And I think, I don't know if it'll ever reduce our prices for solid waste, but I know that will help the recycle system and, you know, our conservation programs will kind of not use so much of our natural resources and go back and use some of our old stuff. So, I applaud you and your department for following through and educating the people a little bit more every day on how this works, because I know I've learned a lot. There were things I put in that I shouldn't have, but now I understand a lot more about what's going on, and I'm sure that I'm not, I'm probably pretty typical of the town resident that, you know, I thought we could, but no, we can't. So, this is a good learning process, and the education has been great.
Thank you.
So, I applaud you for all the work that you do.
And any resident is more than welcome to call our department. We have Erica out on the streets, but she's in the department for questions. I'm always available for anyone that has solid waste or recycling questions, as well as Darlene. We encourage it. We have the availability to educate. We have the tools necessary and the toolkit. We're, we're more than willing to go out and work with anyone that needs information on recycling.
Thank you very much.
I have a couple of questions for you, one related to this. I've seen other, you know, for lack of a better word, are the communities policing? What, what are we doing to, you know, what are we doing, like, hands-on out there? Like, I, do you inspect the bins? Do you have somebody inspecting the bins? And how, how are we educating?
We do. We do have, Erica Lucia came on board. She's our enforcement recycle coordinator. She goes out with the actual truck, so she's behind her in front of them, and checks the todes. There's no lid lifting, but if todes are overloaded, or you can see items that are banned items that are in the recycling that shouldn't be there, she will tag the buckets or leave a card on the door. They can call us back. We go over and give them information and kind of sort through and tell them what they should be recycling and what they shouldn't be recycling. She does that three days a week, and on the alternate days, I go out. If there's anything that's alarming to the recycle company that picks up our recycling or the solid waste, then I'll go out and talk to the residents.
Great. Thank you. And just while we have you here, because, I mean, it's, it's calls that I get and, you know, discussion out in the community on missed trash pickup. Could you please explain to people who are watching, and I know the telegram is here, what, you know, what people are to do if, if their bucket is missed or if their street is missed? Who to call? And if, you know, if your trash is generally picked up at 7:00 on a Friday morning, and they haven't been there by 2:00, do they call on that day to the way to the end of the day? Could you just talk to us a little bit about that process?
Sure. That's a great question.
Thank you.
If your trash is missed, then usually people do wait till the next day. Your trash needs to be out by 7:00 a.m., and they have had some changes in routes, so understandably, people are a little concerned because they weren't picked up till 11:00, and now the trash is being picked up at 8:00, and they didn't have it out. The trash is required to be out at 7:00 a.m. every day. If they are missed, they should call the Board of Health. They can talk to me, they can talk to anyone in the Board of Health, and they'll, they'll get them to me or Erica.
And what's that number, please?
(508) 832-7703.
Thank you.
We then contact our recycle or trash hauler and tell them the properties that were missed, and they make arrangements to go back to the property and pick it up. Fridays are a little different. There's two routes, and we're not open on Saturday. So, if they, if they were missed and they call, they leave a message, or if they email, we're checking things over the weekend. We have been working extensively on Fridays because they don't have an opportunity to call us. Some do call in the afternoon if they know their time that they were picked up. With the two routes, that means they have to bring an outsider in who's now learning the route. So, as we go through them struggles, we're just trying to work to make sure that we initiate a first thing Monday morning pickup for them. If the route gets interrupted, they'll go out on a Saturday, and we try to reach all the residents on them routes to let them know.
So, you know, the simple rules, I have it up by 7:00. If they've missed you, call your office. Don't call the carrier directly. Call your office and speak to the Board of Health.
Yes.
And also, while we have you here, because there's questions out in the community as well, where do they go to get information on the large pickups, whether, if somebody has a, I know it's on the website, but can they also call you for information?
For bulk items?
Yes, bulk items, whether it's a couch or a television.
They should call, again, our office, (508) 832-7703, and we take the information, we pass it on to the hauler. They will call them directly, set up a time, and let them know what the fee is. We have a discounted fee rate if they want to do Republic, so they can go online and get that fee rate, but Republic will give it to them when they call.
Great. Thank you so much. And just, if you'll wait one more minute, does anyone have any questions? First, Masala Liberty, then Mr. Berthium.
What's the most common mistake made by residents in something that's thrown to recycling or?
Plastic bags. So, a lot of people collect their bottles in plastic bags or some of their recyclables, and they take the bag and all and put it in. There are communities, if you're reading a thing like Boston, that they have to do that because they live, you know, they live in high-story tenements, and so they have to bring it down. But here, no plastic bags. That is probably the number one culprit that clogs up the conveyors. As soon as the plastic goes in, the entire recycling load that's going on the conveyor belt is lost, as well as time down for the machine. But the grocery stores do take them, and all of our local grocery stores have buckets. You can bring all of your film, all of your plastic You can bring all of your film, all of your plastic bags, wrappings for water cases, dry cleaning bags, and put them in the grocery stores.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else, Ms. Liliberty? Mr. Berthium.
Just quickly, so if somebody doesn't put their bucket out by 7:00, and the town does do the route, and then they call because they didn't have their bucket out, is there a fee for us to go back? And if there isn't one now, is that something that's going to eventually happen? Because we don't want to reward people for not doing what they're supposed to do.
Right, great question. We, if they forgot to put it out and they call and tell us that, and their circumstances beyond their control, then we do try to have the trash company go back. If the trash company can't go back, they'll try all week to get back on every other route. If they have extra time, they'll try to go back. If not, it stays till the next week.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anything else? Anything else? So just while Eileen is here, we have one more item while she's here. Could I have a motion to move up? Item 6D2, DDIS Public Health Recycling, this is under gift acceptance, recycling from the chamber.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, first of all, I want to thank Eileen and Darlene and Erica and the entire department, because they, this is, it's a lot to manage, and it's a huge program here in town, and they're just doing a great job on the education and outreach. So tied into that, I'm going to have Eileen explain a grant that you have before you tonight as a gift acceptance from the chamber, and what it would be used for and how it kind of came about.
The Chamber of Commerce, for the plastic bag recycle ban that we're considering, the Chamber of Commerce, they represent the businesses, and they wanted to have us do some research on ways that we can eliminate plastic bags in other ways than a plastic bag ban. They are awarding us $1,000 to look in recycling efforts, that we can put together programs to educate the community, which we're currently already doing, but to further enhance that so that people may lessen their use of plastic bags by using reusable bags and letting them know that there's other opportunities to recycle the plastic bags in that direction. So they have offered $1,000 to this program, to the Board of Health and the Solid Waste Committee, so that we can look into ways to further educate the residents for limiting the use of plastic bags or recycling the use of plastic bags when they do use them.
Any questions or comments? Anything on that, Ms. Jacobson?
No.
Okay. So in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, we have a gift in the amount of $1,000 from the Auburn Chamber of Commerce to the DDIS Public Health Recycling. Is there a motion?
I make a motion. Will we accept? And to also send a letter to the Chamber of Commerce to be signed by the chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thanks, thanks so much for your work you do on this.
Thank you.
Okay, going back to our regular agenda, under item 5, Communications, we have correspondence from the State Office of Consumer Affairs and Business Regulation regarding a recent audit of car dealerships for compliance with the state law on lemon law stickers. In your packet, you have the letter from the Deputy General Counsel regarding this matter, and also, the proposal would be to send the enclosed letter to all license holders to remind them of this compliance, because the actual enforcement is under this agency. Do members have any questions or comments? Mr. Holstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my question is, this lemon law has been in place for some time, and what was the criteria for going through and looking at that and enforcing this? Because, like I say, it has been a long time that that lemon law has been in place, and I've never seen stickers, I've never seen anything, you know, purchasing a car or looking at cars, and now we're starting to see this type of a thing coming through, and I was just kind of curious as to what brought this along.
So I would can only assume it's because an audit was triggered, so they did an audit, which they don't do annually.
Okay.
Which they may now, depending on the numbers that they had, may conduct an audit annually. But it was a recent audit done.
I think it's a great idea. If the lemon law was, you know, to be enforced, then the car dealers should be made aware of it and take part in that program. Thank you.
Mr. Carpenter.
Through the chair. And I tend to stand from the letter that they only visited four dealerships, and of those, two were found to be in non-compliance, one some compliance, and only one with non-compliance.
So, I don't have any further information than you regarding the, you know, what's here in the letter, but I believe, and I think you would know this better than I, like, for auditing purposes, they select, they do a random number. So I can only assume that's what was done. Certainly, we can contact Office of Consumer Affairs and Business Regulation to ask them what their procedure was, but I think a good start to be, to, on our part, would be, as they requested, you know, to take the appropriate action to protect our local consumers and mandate the dealership's compliance with the law. I think that this, the first step would be to send them this letter.
With such a small sample, I think it's a little overkill to be sending it out to every single dealership that we have. If this is the only sample, if we only went to four, and of those four, three out of the four had some compliance, I wouldn't think that we need to blitz the town with letters when we don't know if the others are in compliance or they're not. It seems like if they are using the sample method, they're using a very small sample, and it seems like they're asking us to perhaps overreact to their finding.
Yes, Mr. Berthium?
I'd like to respond to that. I think the way I read it was, they're just suggesting that we send a letter to all the dealerships. The dealerships are supposed to have a particular sticker for new vehicles or a different sticker for used vehicles, and I think they're basically saying that, they're just suggesting that we send that out as almost like a service to our people from our town that are buying the cars, that it's in their best interest that they make sure they see the stickers on the cars. So I don't, I don't know that it's necessarily that they're, you know, coming after us, but more just making, kind of giving it as a suggestion that we're doing a service to the town's people to make sure that the dealers have the proper stickers. And that's the way I read it, and I'm all for sending out the letters. Do we know how many? I don't think we have more than probably 25 dealerships.
Oh, it's not that many.
So I think it's to benefit the people of the town, and for that reason, for...
Ms. Jacobson would like to say something.
Yeah, through the chair. Just to be clear, the letter that you have in your packet from the state came from the state, and it was for the board as the licensing authority for car dealerships. And as you can see, it says that we ask you as the licensing authority to take appropriate action to protect your local consumers and mandate compliance with the law. So it was my recommendation to do the letter. The state did not do this. I wrote this letter to recommend to the board to consider sending it to all license holders as one way for the board to gently remind everybody that there is a law. It was more in the tone of, as we were just talking about, education and outreach for recycling. A lot of people don't know, and there are different dealerships change hands, different managers in the dealerships. We just thought it would be a friendly reminder from the licensing authority, you're not coming down on anybody, you're not overreacting, you're just saying, just be reminded you need to put the stickers in place. Because it was a random sampling, there may be others that aren't doing so. So this would be a way to educate and provide outreach to the business community in a friendly way of just reminding them that there is a law that they need to be in compliance with. The state, as the chair stated, the state is actually the enforcing authority for the lemon law. So I would assume if there was some kind of action that they would need to take, we would be doing that as well. So this is just more of a reminder than actually taking any action.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just briefly state that I support sending the letter. Mr. Liliberty?
My question, you might have already sort of answered this with it's the state, but did the state issue any fine in response to the two that weren't following it?
Through the chair, if they did, they didn't notify us. The only information we have on this is the letter that was sent to the licensing authority. They did not provide any additional information. We tried to go back and see if we had any prior letters, and we couldn't find anything recently, to wonder how often they did this audit. So we really don't have a lot of information, which is why we thought the gentle approach to just a reminder to everybody that there is a lemon law, and there are requirements for stickers, as opposed to the board bringing in the one that was zero compliant or the one that was 50% compliant and lecturing them. We thought this would be a better way to approach it with the business community.
Is there anything else on this? What action does the board want to take?
I'll make a motion that we send the proposed letter to the dealerships of Auburn to make sure they conform to the lemon laws.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It's four to one, Sharon. Okay, moving on, under Board of Selectmen, general items, we've taken care of A, B, so we are at C. Votes on the 2018 Fall Special Town Meeting. The first vote would be to schedule a Fall Special Town Meeting proposed for Tuesday, October 23rd at 7:00 p.m. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, we need to make sure that we have our free cash certification, that Ed and his team have been able to complete the work that they need to do on the state, which is why we generally wait until the 2nd or 3rd of October. So looking at the calendar, it appears that we could be in compliance with everything we need and be ready for a Fall Town Meeting on October 23rd. We did verify it with the school department, and the room was available, the auditorium was available at that night. And as a result, we are recommending that we open the warrant this evening and propose to close it on September 11th. The reason for that being, on September 10th, there is a board meeting, and I believe that's the evening you're holding a public hearing on the plastic bags. So should the board want to move forward on any type of a warrant item, that would still give the board the opportunity to do that versus closing it on Monday night. So that would be the reason for the dates. Sharon had notified all the department heads in the school department of this proposed dates and the proposed schedules a couple of weeks ago. We knew we weren't coming in for a meeting until tonight, if we'd actually vote on it, but we wanted them to have a heads up, so they could also notify the boards and commissions. So people are well aware of the deadline. So tonight would be more the formal voting to do that.
Are there any questions regarding the timeline? So we would need three separate motions. Is there, first, a motion to schedule the Fall Town Meeting?
Make a motion to schedule the Special Town Meeting on Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018, at 7:00.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Is there a motion regarding the opening of the warrant?
Motion to open the warrant for the Fall Special Town Meeting on August 27, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Is there a motion regarding the closing of the warrant?
Motion to close the warrant for the Fall Special Town Meeting. Proposed to close on, and that's actually, we're going to actually close it on the 11th. Okay, so it'll be to close on Tuesday, September 11th, 2018, at 4:00 in the afternoon.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted?
Madam Chair, if I could just thank you very much for that donation. It means a lot to me and my family.
It's a difficulty anniversary for you.
It is.
It's not one we celebrate, but not one we forget either.
Thank you.
We have from Carmine and Marie Carboni, in memory of Donald Gamache, to the fire department gift account, and the amount of $20. Is there a motion?
Also to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? And the third one, we have already taken out of order. So moving on to Board of Selectmen, item E, there are no proclamations or recognitions. Item F, I know I had asked Sharon to send out an email just to start the discussion on the goals for the Board of Selectmen. Does anybody have anything they want to start with? Mr. Liliberty?
Well, I'd just ask that the board allow Mr. Berthium and myself to continue looking into trying to find a way to livestream our meetings. Granted, it hasn't exactly worked out with Facebook Live. We've run into a lot of problems there, but recently found out that there might be another avenue for live streaming, so I just ask the board to continue to support us there.
So is that the recommended goal for you? Because we were bringing them to the board, we'll write them out, and then we'll take action on them. So it's to allow the subcommittee to continue, to looking into livestreaming the meetings? And I'm not sure that you're a subcommittee of the, you were a separate committee, if I recall?
Correct.
Okay, so not a subcommittee, the committee. Okay, did anyone have anything else?
One of the things that we had talked about one time before, and I spoke with the town manager on it, and she suggested we take a look at the entertainment license again.
Yeah.
I don't think we've had a chance to, you know, fine-tune that. I know that we had some issues with a couple of different things, and that we should go back and take a look at that. So I think that goal, especially with all the venues in town where we have inside, outside entertainment, that type of thing, I think it'd be a good idea to take a look at that. And on another note, I was thinking, as we're going along, as a policy board, it's very, very difficult to come up with goals for a policy board. However, there's things that can fall through the cracks, and I think a goal of this board here would be to take a look at boards, commissions, committees, if they've got anything that should be coming to us that may have kind of been on the back burner, and, well, we've got to get to it eventually, and it's like we have things here that we should be doing, and if we don't get to them right away, sometimes it falls between the cracks and we lose something. So I think it might be a good idea if we go back and maybe work with the administration to find out where some of these committees and commissions are, and if there's anything we can help them with determining a resolution to any issue they may have.
Thank you, Mr. Holstrom. Anything else? So the only, and, you know, kind of in line with what you just said, my proposal would be that we do a comprehensive review of all of our policies, and any policies that, you know, go before the DCG, that we look for feedback from the DCG to see if there have been any, any challenges or obstacles in our, like the entertainment license, that we should be reviewing. So not just to have us review it, but I would propose that we ask specific policies that go before the DCG, that we ask for some feedback from them.
I guess...
Ms. Holstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my comment to that would be, we do get reports back from the DCG, and they do say that, you know, they pro or con, or whatever they've got in front of them, but I don't know if it's something that we should sit down with them at some point and just say, have you got enough information in these licenses? Is there any other questions that we should be asking as part of the policy? And be a little proactive instead of waiting for anything more to come forward. I think it's a great idea, but I think if we could sit with them and say, well, what do you think about, is there other questions we should ask, other things we should be looking at? And then they also, most of the time with the DCG, it's with entertainment licenses and things coming forward for, you know, sporadic events and this and that. What do we ask, or should we add it to our policy? So I think in line with that, I think it'd be... I think it's a great idea, but I think if we could sit with them and say, well, what do you think about, is there other questions we should ask, other things we should be looking at? And then they also, most of the time with the DCG, it's with entertainment licenses and things coming forward for, you know, sporadic events and this and that. What do we ask, or should we add it to our policy? So I think in line with that, I think it'd be a good idea.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else? So Sharon, has that enough information for you to kind of gather those up and have them available for a discussion and a vote at the next meeting? Thank you. The next item we have is vote to approve the amendment to House Bill 4551, an act authorizing the town of Auburn to relocate Faith Avenue and convey remnant parcels of real property. And Ms. Jacobson, if you can just bring the board up to speed as to why this came before us again?
Certainly. So just as a reminder, the Faith Ave relocation is an item that was initially recommended by the planning board, and it was a warrant article, and the board voted to support the warrant article at town meeting. Town meeting passed the warrant article, and therefore, the warrant article authorized the Board of Selectmen to file legislation on, directly related to the transfer of the land. So the legislation was filed jointly. I believe Representative Frost filed it in the House, working with Senator Moore, but it is a House bill, it was assigned to House bill. So we've been tracking the legislation, and Representative Frost's office got back to us about a week or so ago, and said that the bill was in the Committee on Third Reading, and that the Committee on Third Reading had recommended that the Board of Selectmen take another vote to amend it, to include a reference, as you see here, to two orders of taking, which is how the town ended up getting the land in the first place. So it was just a technical amendment. We checked with bills on third reading, and they felt that it was a significant enough change that would require your vote, but not, it's not changing the town meeting vote. Town meeting voted to authorize you to file the legislation and to make or approve of any amendments to it. So the board is authorized to amend the legislation at this point. Checked with town council, town council agreed. The board is the one that would be authorized to, to make this amendment. Once this amendment is approved by the board, Committee on Third Reading is going to recommend the proposed language to amend the House bill, because they just need to be more specific on how the land got there. Again, it's a, it's a technical amendment.
So this is something that has already gone through our process, in the town meeting process?
Okay. So this is our next step, because of town meeting, now it comes to us so that we can vote this through, so that they can process that?
So can we put a motion out?
Yes. The motion is here.
Yeah.
You know, that the legislature requires.
Yes, and the town council has approved of your, the language of your vote. He actually prepared this language based on what was recommended by the Committee on Third Reading.
So we just need to read it?
So you just need to read it as is.
Okay.
And then we can let the House know that you approved it, and then they can move forward with the legislation.
Mr. Bertheum?
I'll move that the, that we approve, that the Board of Selectmen approve an amendment to House Number 4551, an act authorizing the town of Auburn to relocate Faith Ave and convey remnant parcels of real property, by inserting in Section 2, after the word "avenue", in Line 16, the following pursuant to Section 1, which are portions of the land acquired by the town pursuant to two orders of taking, recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds at Book 4547, Page 270, and Book 4597, Page 101.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there a discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Is there any other issue on that? Any other question on the property?
No.
Okay. All right, the next item, moving on to town manager items, we've taken care of item A, so item B, economic development material.
Through the chair, so in your packet, you actually have a copy of our new folder, which I wanted to pass down so you can see it. We've been working on this for probably about a year. Just so you know, the, the town had received a grant for $25,000, and that's how we did our economic development strategy plan. And with a small amount of that, we had also paid the consultant to help pull together some concepts for promoting the town of Auburn to businesses based on the economic development strategy plan. So we then took some of the concept ideas from the consultant and worked with a company to create this brochure, and I'm going to pass this on this folder. And then you'll see, we've stacked the different information in it. So we've got a piece in here on quality of life, recreation, arts and culture. There's a piece on transportation, and after tomorrow morning, there'll be another announcement coming at Worcester Regional Airport for another carrier, so we'll be able to update it, which is why we did separate sheets, so it would never be outdated. We could continue to update it and replace whatever pieces we need. And there's also a piece in here on the economic development profile. We've got some nice statistics in there. And then we put together a brochure, which would just be something smaller that we could hand out at various events or chamber events, where you could just hand this out. And in this packet, we also have a letter that would be from our economic development coordinator, Shannon Regan, or myself if needed, and explaining that we have an economic development initiative, and we're making efforts to reach out to the business community. And in the back here, depending on the situation, we're putting them only for you to see them, but there are different property, land for sale, commercial property for sale, we put that in too. So should we be trying to attract a company, we'd want to show them what's available. So our intent now is to send these out. We've already identified a list of local commercial industrial brokers, that we'll be sending this to, to each of them that we work with, because oftentimes, the point of first contact for any business or entrepreneur looking to come here is the broker, and we may never have the opportunity to sit with them ourselves. We don't know who these clients are. So if the broker has good information on the town and can share it, we thought that would be appropriate for them to have a nice packet, and we'll give them as many packets as they need. I believe we had 100 made up just to start. And we had a small budget from the chamber that allowed us to have these materials. When the economic development promotional video is done, that can also be inserted in here as well, and it's another tool for us. We're also going to be, next step is working to identify companies that might be seeking to expand or relocate or start up new in the town of Auburn. So we're really taking an aggressive approach to trying to encourage companies to come here, stay here, expand their facilities here, and this is just a start of it. And I just wanted you to see it, it's a very nice packet. And again, we, we were able to get these done at a fairly reasonable cost and through money received from the chamber.
Excellent. So while members are looking at that, I had, had a glance at that on television today. So first of all, thank you for sending us the email that you were going to be a guest on Jordan Levy's show today, and I had a scheduled vacation day, so had the opportunity to, to hear the half an hour, and, you know, congratulations on a great job.
Thank you.
You know, not just promoting the town of Auburn, but, but welcoming. It was a very welcoming message, come to Auburn, you know, for business, so, great job.
Thank you. Yeah, it was, it was a great opportunity to go on the Jordan Levy Show today, and the topic was really up to us, and Ed and I had talked about it and thought it would be good to talk about economic development and all the initiatives going on. It kind of gave us a plug in the community for the fact that we do still have some key development parcels available in town, and that we're still actively seeking to push forward on some of our initiatives, including the Jewelry Square Initiative, the facade program that we're putting together, the Central and Credit Union, and just a lot of different things that we're working on from an economic development perspective. So thank you, the board, for your support, and we're, we're just very excited about having a nice collateral material that could be put out at various functions where you're trying to really attract business.
Great. Thank you. Does anyone have anything on this?
I'll just say that I was able to spend a little time today and read through it, and I thought it was awesome, well, well put together. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, the next item is a request authorization to accept and expend the 2018 Emergency Management Performance Grant funds in the amount of $4,660 to fund 50% of the Code Red. Ms. Jacobson?
Through the chair, this is an annual grant that we apply for. It's actually formula-based, so it's not a competitive grant. Mr. Holstrom, will remember this, from when he was the Emergency Management Director, the first year this grant came to our attention, we used it to fund 50% of the cost of Code Red, with the remaining 50% coming from local cable access funds. So we continue to do that. It's been a great model. I think that was done back in 2012 or 13 was the first time.
I believe it was, 2000, maybe 2011.
Might have been, might have been 2011. And the amount of $4,460 is the amount that the state tells us is available, and it's based on your population. So in a certain grouping of population, you get that amount, somebody gets less, somebody gets more, it's all population-based. So we do have to apply for the money. The application is not due until September, but we were asked to submit it two weeks ago, because they want to start early, because sometimes it takes the state a while to go through all of them, and so we're asking you to allow us to accept and expend. We did have to submit it preliminarily, but technically, it won't be submitted formally. The state is holding it, and then they'll submit it by the deadline in two weeks, but they did want to see all of our information ahead of time. There's a lot of pieces that go into this grant. So again, we are hoping to fund Code Red again.
I make a motion, we authorize it to accept and expend the 2018 Emergency Management Performance Grant funds in the amount of $4,460 to fund 50% of the Code Red.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Thank you. Do you have anything else, Ms. Jacobson?
I'm all set, thank you.
All righty, great, thanks. Moving on to tabled items, we have in your packet a revised code of conduct proposal and discussion and vote on the proposed code of conduct. This was submitted by the subcommittee. I believe you took some comments back and have been working on this. Which one of you wants to talk to this? Mr. Bertheum?
Just basically, we presented this, I don't know, several months ago. Mr. Carpenter came up with some, some good valuable changes, and we went back through it and tried to incorporate as much of the changes and that he had suggested, and think we, we have a pretty good finished product now, and hoping that we can get a vote on it.
Thank you, Mr. Bertheum, you did. It's, it's a, you know, I feel that it's a good, good document now. We've, you've gone back and forth on this, and I think it's time that we took, you know, a vote up or down on it, so I do support this. Mr. Holstrom?
Yeah, in, in the process of this, there's been times where the code of conduct usually would come in handy, but I guess in general, it's good to have a document as such, but I guess overall, ethics and common sense and congeniality, I guess, are the three words I would use to, you know, submit to this board so that we all work together and things go along. So the code of conduct, I think, is going to spell out a little bit about what we can do, but I guess, like I say, the congeniality, the common sense and ethics of what we do here are most important.
Thank you. Anything else on this? Is there a motion?
Should I make a motion?
You can make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the code of conduct as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there a discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Did you get that, Sharon, four to one? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Moving on, the revision of the recognition policy, have, where are we at on that?
I had a call back from one of our members, and I guess there was a little miscommunication about who was going to follow up the revision of this, and I think we can do that, and I think at some point, either our next meeting or the meeting after, we should be able to bring this back and have some more discussion on it.
Okay. Is there anything else on this? Ready, thank you.
And with the proclamation policy and new recommendation for the subcommittee's consideration, I think that's in the same case. We will have a look at that, and we should be able to bring that back to you shortly.
All righty. Thank you. Anything else on that? And the final item that we've tabled is the proposed plastic bag ban, and we have a hearing continued on September 10, 2018. Does anybody want to add anything to that? Mr. Holstrom?
I guess through you to the, the town manager. Has there been any input? Has there been any information come forward from outside?
Through the chair, we have not received, since the board brought it up the last time, and you reminded people, I think we put something up on the website too, on a reminder on social media, we have not received anything additional. I've shared anything we received. We had reached out to some of the other senior centers, and just to see what they were experiencing, and I'm putting together, so you'll see which ones that the senior center reached out to for us, and I'll have that for you well in advance of your September 10 meeting. And even that, there wasn't a lot of feedback, positive or negative, from some of the other senior centers. What was interesting is a number of them provide the recyclable bags, and those communities that do have the ban on it. The senior centers themselves make bags available for their seniors. Some of them were received through donations from businesses, some of them just put it in their budget to do it. But there wasn't a lot of feedback from anything else.
Mr. Holstrom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess for September 10, if there's been no more input, this thing has kind of gone quiet. What is our plans for the, the hearing? Are we just going to see if there's any input and then close it? Are we voting on it? I don't know. What is the next step after the, the hearing?
So I don't want to speak for Mr. Lo Liberty, this is his item. It's my understanding that we were going to keep the hearing open, continue the hearing till September, close the hearing, and I would expect that Mr. Lo Liberty is going to request that the board take some type of action.
Yeah, through the chair, I would ask, I was planning to ask at the end of that meeting if there was any additional information given from any residents or any more businesses or retailers in town that wanted to have anything to say. I was hoping that after the summer, we might get some more people to come in and talk about it, or even some more emails. Granted, people still have two weeks to write in their opinions on that, review the information that we'd already gotten, and I was putting together some more information for the board to present then to, not in a full presentation as I did last time, but just as little pieces of information to give to the board, and then I would plan to ask them to vote, ask everyone to vote in favor of bringing it before town meeting.
Sorry, could you just, I missed the last part about town meeting.
Oh, just that I was...
Support?
Support the plastic bag reduction.
Okay, so support a warrant article to be sent to town meeting?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holstrom?
I guess, thank you, Madam Chair. I think, I know this has been ongoing for some time, but I think I would caution the board to take a good look at any additional information coming in, and I know that September 10, and then we want to close the warrant for September 11. Pretty tight schedule to take a look at this, and I know we've all had a chance to take a look at it over the course of time, but if there's new information come forward, if we have new people come in and make presentations, or ideas, opinions of their own, I don't know. To put it all together in one night and decide so that we can send it to town meeting, I don't know if I'd be quite ready to be able to do that. So I would caution the board that, you know, that September 10 might be a little bit tight to make a vote on it. We may have to wait till the following May for it, I don't know. It's just, just up for discussion.
Mr. Lo Liberty, and then Mr. Carpenter?
Just to respond, any information that, any new information that I bring forward or I plan to would obviously be in support of this going forward, and I have no idea what the chambers' thoughts were. They seem to be the big opponent to it. I was looking at some of their complaints and trying to rectify those in my proposition or my proposed bylaw to maybe take back some of the things or ease some of their concerns. So I don't know if any new information is going to come opposed to that, the bylaw, but if it does, then I guess that would be up for the board members to decide on their own what merit they want to give.
Mr. Carpenter?
Just wanted to caution everybody, we don't want to fall into the habit of deliberating before the hearing, because we're supposed to deliberate in a public hearing, not prior to, even though this is a tabled item, we shouldn't be having lengthy conversation on it.
Mr. Berthew?
So, if Mr. La Liberty, it looks like will bring us a proposed bylaw wording on September 10, so--
Well, everything will be, has to be in your packet by the third--
Okay, that's why I want to make sure that we have the three or four days to look at it, okay. Thank you.
So, there's nothing else under tabled items. Moving on to Board of Selectmen men's items. This is from Mr. Carpenter, a request for the Board consideration to amend the contract language for the manager's goal setting to January to December timeframe to allow for a full year. Mr. Carpenter?
Well, we've had discussions at the Board, and I had met with the manager and asked if she was interested in pursuing this, because if she wasn't, there was no point in bringing it forward. She said that this would actually make it easier and give her actually 12 months to do what we ask her to do, and the contract says it's a year. We've given her nine months. So, it's simply moving the deck chairs on the Titanic from, I think, what is it, February or March, by the time we're done, to January, February, when we're doing, when we have to review her. So, if we moved it to a calendar year, it would give her time to actually do that and for us to evaluate her, as opposed to, let's do it in March, and then she has less than a year to complete some of these things, which really isn't fair to the individual.
Is that all you have, Mr. Carpenter, right now?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Holstrom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess this gets into the request for Board consideration to amend contract language. I guess we have to take a look at the contract and see if there's language in it that is required to be changed.
Um--
Or if this is something that we can--
So--
Change without, because that would be opening the contract and renegotiation, and I don't think that's going to be anything that we want to do. So, I think that if we don't have to open the contract and just a change of schedule, then I would have no problem supporting that.
So, I don't believe that we would have to open the contract just to set this timeline, and if we do, Ms. Jacobson, please advise now, because this should be discussed, any contract issue should be discussed in executive session, you know, unless you waive that.
Through the chair, I would waive that for this discussion.
Okay.
I don't believe that the contract, I'll double-check, but I don't believe the contract specified when the goals are set. I believe the contract said the goals will be set annually--
Okay.
--by jointly between the town manager and the Board of Selectmen. So, I don't think anything has to be amended or reopened. So, I think it's just a matter of establishing the timeline. I believe, and I'll double-check, I think my contract, it goes January 30. I think that's the first date, so it's the end of January, so if the goals could be established in January, then I'll know at the end of January, I could then have the whole year. And it would help with the department heads too, because the goals get passed down to them. The hard part is, and we've discussed it with the Board before, it wouldn't work to do it on a fiscal year, because that's not my contract, so I'd only have six months under the contract to do it. But then, I take those goals and put it into the goals of the department heads, which are done in May. So, it's going to cause a little bit of some adjustment, but that's okay. It would still give us more time.
Mr. Holstrom?
Like I say, you know, we don't have to amend her contract anyway. If it's not time-sensitive in her contract, then I would be supportive of changing it to whenever it's the best of the possible time for her to do that. My only concern is that something as important as this and approaching a personnel contract, our town manager's contract, without approaching the Board first, discussing with the town manager, without our discussion here, I think I have a little concern over that we were notified of this by a member's item, and I think it should have been brought to us first instead of discuss with the town manager to bring it in this proposal.
If I could, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Holstrom, you've been here when we've had a discussion on this very item. So, it has been brought to the Board. It was brought to the Board numerous times, and as for reopening the contract, the only reason I put that language is because the manager said that that is what had to happen. If we do have to reopen it, it wouldn't be reopening her contract for every single thing. It would be for one thing. So, it isn't anybody trying to reopen a contract that we decided less than a year ago to continue. So, I guess, you know, you seem to think that you get to tell me how to be a Board member, and--
Point of order, Madam Chair.
And I'm getting a little tired of you submitting items under member items without language. I put language in per the policy, and you're asking for additional something, which I don't think, A, you're entitled to, and B, I followed the policy. So, I don't want anybody watching to think that Dan isn't following the policy, because Dan did follow the policy.
So, I just want to follow up on that, and I don't want this, these personal attacks, but if a member item of Mr. Holstrom's has come through without what you feel is appropriate language, then that's on me, because the chairman sets the agenda. So, if you ever have a concern that there's not appropriate language, please let me know, and I'll address it. But I've always felt that there was appropriate language. If there is, if there has been a time that it didn't meet the open meeting law requirements, please bring it to my attention. I encourage that. But the chairman is the one that has to approve the agenda and has approved it. And as Mr. Holstrom did, you know, we're having a discussion here now, which is important to have, you know, in the public view, but I also had concerns. I mean, you just stated it was the town manager. I don't, I wasn't there. I don't know what you had for conversations, but I too had concerns about you going directly to the town manager to discuss amending contract language. Again, I don't know what happened, because I wasn't there. Mr. Carpenter just said that you recommended that language, so--
Through the chair, it would be hard to remember the conversation, but I know you asked me at that time, and I hadn't looked at the contract, and I said I would have to go back and look and see if it needed an amendment. I thought it might have, and I think all of us thought it might have been in the contract, but I read it. I'll read it again. I didn't see in there where there was actually a date, and then I went and looked at the evaluation procedure that the Board adopted, and the only dates in the evaluation procedure were relevant to when my report gets submitted, when your report gets submitted, and when the evaluation happens. But I'm going to, if I could, just double-check it again, because I did think it was somewhere in that contract, and I'm not seeing that.
If you could please provide us additional information at our next meeting. Did anyone else have anything on this? Mr. La Liberty, then, Mr. Berthew.
Well, I just wanted to say that this was something that has come up a couple times in our meeting, so it's not completely out of left field. We've talked about only giving Mrs. Jacobson a few months to work on her goals and how we wanted to expand that, so I see where Mr. Carpenter's coming from. And I really don't see another way that he could have brought it to the Board beforehand besides going through, putting it on as a member item and discussing it here, and obviously we're not taking a vote on it, so I don't see it as a big issue, but I'm taking a caution with it.
The issue that I had was going directly to the manager rather than the full Board to discuss opening a contract. Mr. Berthew?
You know, maybe the language, but I agree with Mr. La Liberty and Dan, that, you know, I just, it was kind of a quick question. It would just make things more simple for you, and then he tried to do it. So, I think, you know, I don't see anything wrong here. Obviously, we have to get a little bit of checking on the language or whether we're opening a contract and what the, you know, what happens when we open a contract, but, you know, I just, I think that, you know, Mr. Carpenter did what, you know, I would have done the same thing. I would have, you know, it's just a simple question, would this make life easier for you? So, I hope we can end this and get the language and, you know, I commend Mr. Carpenter for looking into it.
Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, we have the minutes of May 29, June 11, June 25, and June 23, 2018. Are there any corrections or omissions? Seeing none, the Chair will accept them as written. If there's no other business--
Looking into adjourned.
Thank you. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted.
Thank you. Good night.